So I'm here to answer any questions about those two contracts.
Okay. I just saw in the news tonight before I came that our military is getting like 2.6%.
Right.
First time. That's crazy.
I sent it, I signed it.
It's crazy.
I know, but that's someone else can pick it up. How's he doing?
If you're about to stop, you can just make the changes right there. Just come back out immediately. Hey George. The effort it took to write this out could have been just typing it.
Sorry, sorry, here?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
We got zero last year, we lost ground last year.
You guys are.
Cause I only have the information I find. I don't know how else to get that.
Now you're doing some time, I go first.
If you're out of one, something you gotta do is you gotta sell it.
I believe I did that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about like.
Come there and hold it.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the special meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority and the regular town council meeting of North Bramford, Connecticut to order on Tuesday, September 18th at 7:04. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty. Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Candelora. Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Big Leo.
Here.
Councilor Zampano.
Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 special meeting of WPCA and Town Council?
So.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Miller. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leo.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni, I would like to make a request to move item 13J up before the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda.
Second.
All in favor? I'm just gonna. So.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, tonight we have the board chair, Shawna Papaholzer, here to make a brief presentation to us in regards to renovating the high school as new. So Shawna?
Deputy Mayor Angeloni and council members, thank you for giving the Board of Education the opportunity to present evidence supporting the need for a renovate to new project for North Bramford High School. I am speaking as board chairperson, but also as a mother, aunt, friend, and resident. The information I'm going to present is not new, you have heard it several times. The condition of the school is worsening as each year passes. It is time we work together to create an environment that is safe and comfortable for the children of this town. A school that doesn't require the faculty and students to wear coats indoors during the winter months to stay warm. A place that buckets don't need to be placed throughout during the heavy rain. Natural light, thermal comfort, and indoor air quality control have proven to have a positive effect on learning. I encourage each of you, if you haven't already done so, to please take a tour of the school. I could provide pictures, but I know many of you have already seen them, and walking through the school and seeing students in it in their own environment really is a telling story. We are looking at different skills in this workforce today than those in the 20th century. Teamwork, collaboration, critical thinking, and problem solving are in high demand. We need to look at how a school is designed so we can teach differently. Technology infused learning is now an integral part of education. When I talk about renovating the school, I want you to understand, I'm not talking about a Taj Mahal, but I'm talking about a safe environment that fits the needs of 21st century learning. With that said, North Bramford High School was built in 1964 with an addition renovation in 1972 to accommodate an increase of students. A new roof was put on in 2014. Other than the initiatives I just mentioned, the school has been largely untouched for 54 years. The windows throughout the building are single paint, 1964 originals. They are not energy efficient, replacement parts are no longer available. Many windows, including some of the classrooms, must be kept closed even when it is hot out. Plumbing throughout the building is original and experiences leaks. Most of the electrical work has been in operation for over 50 years. The electrical infrastructure for technology was installed in 1997. That's 20, 21 years ago. An assessment needs to be done to see how much additional capacity there is. The HVAC system needs to be upgraded. The univentilators in the classrooms are the originals from 1964. Heating levels in the building vary significantly. Pieces of the HVAC were replaced in 2017 and a boiler was purchased, but is not significantly improving the overall heating and cooling throughout the school. The school is not ADA compliant. For example, there is only one handicapped accessible, accessible male and female student restroom on each floor. There is no accessible bathrooms available for teachers or administration. Abesta's abatement has been going on since 2001 and 75% is completed. Continued work is needed at an estimated cost of $150,000 to $250,000. I can continue with a laundry list of citations from the New England School Development Council that are as far back as 2000, but I am sure you are aware of many of them. If you would like a copy of the surveys, I am happy to get the information for you so you can see the continued citations from survey to survey. The Board of Education is requesting Town Council's approval to move forward with a renovate to new high school project. Anthony Esposito has confirmed that $25,000 remains available and town funding earmarked for a facility study. North Bramford is 88 with a 51% reimbursement rate on the adjustment per capita obtained from the state's website. This percentage can be deceiving as there are ineligible costs. For example, the high school is now considered a complex as a result of the auditorium connection. We also put a new roof on, in 2014, so that is also ineligible. Work done outside the school property, such as bringing utilities to the site, as well as repairs, replacements, or maintenance work, are not eligible for reimbursement either. We are looking at somewhere around, and this is conservative, around a 46% reimbursement rate. Reimbursement is also based on enrollment, which New England School Development Council completes. On eight-year numbers, the last one done for North Bramford was 2014, but their projection is lower than our actual enrollment, so we should request that that be done again. Do you need any further information from me so that I can compel you to support this project?
So I have a question.
Sure.
Before we wanted to spend too much money on it, and there's all this talk out there of consolidating small school districts. Are we gonna have enough kids in 20, 25 years here that we warrant that we want to spend $50 million on a school? Or are we gonna get, like, in Vermont, they ordered small towns to, you know, consolidate their school systems? So, and I know going down the coast, you know, this side of the Connecticut River, there's several small towns that are really struggling. They have a few less students than us, but not many. So if we continue to lose students every year, so how are you guys going to, how do we sell it to the people in town? We need to do this when we may not need or have a high school in the near future.
That is not a worry at this point. We looked back at our, I believe it was third grade, and we will still have numbers moving up from third grade on. But we were looking at other ways to make better use of the high school, like possibly moving central office into the high school so that the space is being utilized in another way. Possibly moving the preschool over to the high school as well, making it wrapped into a child development program. So we're brainstorming different ways that we could use the space in the high school so it's not only for solely the high school function.
Or would they all fit in the auditorium in junior high?
They definitely would not all fit in auditor, at this point. I mean, I can't project.
See, when I went through the high school, we had 1,100 kids there. In the first two years I was there, we had a lie, not a diamond.
Right.
We all fit.
Yeah. I think learning is.
Thirty kids in a class.
I think learning is different this way, so classrooms need to be slightly larger so that furniture can be manipulated.
So what's the number, or like, you guys must hear from the state, or like, what's the number of students?
So this is our projection.
When you can have a sustainable high school and offer all the classes that, you know, you might, you might not, or, you know, offer the classes that you could get by consolidating with another town, and maybe we can't afford it because there's only two kids that wanna take it.
So I have the numbers here, so currently, we have 552 roughly students as of October 1 in the high school. In 2019, it's 546, and if we go out all the way to 2024, it's 445. So there is a reduction, but it's still not a reduction enough to consolidate with another town, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I think we're still at least 50% higher than the smaller towns that are being told to, you better look at something.
But even, if I can just jump in, if you look at like Madison right now, their first, second, third, and fourth grades are running in the 140 range, so if you project out 10 years, hand high school could look similar to North Bramford High School. There's a lot of houses for sale that population has.
And believe me, I get it, that nobody wants to send their kids to a different town.
Right, right.
You know, that's why we got a high school. My dad went to Hill House. So did I. And look how smart you guys were. The Hill House academics.
I have a question that's slightly off topic, but it's been on my mind, so I'll take advantage of everybody being here. It's been a lot warmer at the beginning of the school year than it has been. I'm just wondering how you, it's, it's working in the school with.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Well, I have not dismissed school early one time. Two of our buildings are air conditioned, the other two are partially air conditioned. We've been creative moving the students around, so we've accommodated as best we possibly can as an ideal, no. But we're looking at some creative ways at TBS to put an additional tandem air conditioners into those classrooms, which will give significant, have a significant impact there, and then we'll look at the high schools. So if you're looking and projecting out excellent years, in the next couple of years, our schools should be in decent shape. They're not efficient to run single unit air conditioners in the classroom, but as we see the trends with the heat and everything, it's, it makes sense to do it.
But if you're asking about real life in the high school, I have children, friends that attend the high school, it's hot. There's some classrooms that the windows don't open. The teachers are accommodating and they move from classroom to classroom so that they're not overheating, but it's not an ideal situation for learning, and that has nothing to do with administration or the teachers. They're doing the best they can with the facility.
No, it, it's nine degrees on the second floor of the library, it's hot.
It's hot.
It's hot, and Mr. Steph was here tonight.
I believe he gave three bottles of water.
He was gracious enough to reel cases of water out to the top floor and deliver, so we, we did what we had to do. But we did not dismiss or.
Shawna, when you're talking about renovation, what are you looking at in terms of security needs? Are there things that need to change as a result of those kinds of needs?
Absolutely, and Scott's been working with the security team to get a better idea of what we need to face, but our door handles aren't compliant with security. Our windows are single paint, our windows are too low the way they're currently set for security reasons. We don't have a strong main entrance, which really should move and have the main office and the nurse and other central locators in the same area. I know the police department has been involved, and I know Scott can speak better than me, but I, I've been told not to give too much detail in this area because it's something that should be discussed behind closed doors for the safety of the children if we move forward with this project.
So security would be at the forefront when developing. You look at a new building like MBIS, which we've only been into for, what, five years now? And that isn't really complying with the safety expectations today. Ceiling to floor, glass panes of your library, your front doors, a number of things that they don't, they would not do today when designing a building. It's rapidly changing. Unfortunately, this problem, this.
No, I ask that question because when I go to the main entrance, I mean, it's all glass.
It's exposed, it's exposed.
So the $25,000 that is still in your budget, what would that enable you to do to start the project?
It would allow for a facility study, get a basic facility study and drawing. And from there, we would present it back to you to see where we are and what you would support, and talk about different ideas when we go search for an architect as well. We'll look for a Plan A and a Plan B, so we'll give you an ideal of what we would like, and then options to downgrade, upgrade, depending on what we do as a team. I don't want it to be solely driven by the Board of Education since this does impact the taxpayers, and I think the Board of Education and the Town Council need to be on the same page with this.
Similar to the Moser Pylon years ago when they looked at the entire district, but obviously focusing on the high school, getting all stakeholders what's important, you know, making it the most efficient project as possible, what our goals are, and creating and getting that going.
We have some ideas of what we like, and that is, one of them is moving the entry to the school more towards the auditorium to help A with security and B having the school's offices kind of located in that same kind of circle to help with both traffic flow and security and have all those. If you look through the school surveys, they all say have your main office, your nurse, your guidance, all in the same area, and that would give us the opportunity to do that.
Shawna, are we talking about renovating the existing building? Or are we talking about additions to the existing building?
It would be renovation of the existing building.
Of what's there, okay.
Now renovating is new, it's basically taking the, the building and going right down to the studs and removing everything but keeping the footprint. No additional square footage, no increased space, just a redesign within your structure that you have.
Okay.
With all efficient lighting, ceilings, updated bathrooms, complete abatement of asbestos, all of those things that are now 21st century furniture. Yeah, roof stays.
The roof stays, right, it's not eligible.
So I've gotta ask, was it just part of your presentation? And it's, that's old news that we're moving buckets around collecting water?
No, my son goes to the school, I get firsthand information.
So there's buckets, there's.
There's buckets, in the winter, kids are freezing. Now, I can't tell you that kids are freezing firsthand because my son just returned to the school, but he's kept in contact with his friends, so yes, the, the school leaks, it's freezing, it's not the, the heating, the quality.
Well, I guess our point is if it's a new roof in 2014.
It's the windows, it's leaking through the windows.
So.
It rains inside the building, not from the roof, it leaks through the windows.
Okay, so the bucket.
The roof is good, the windows are not.
Okay, because we haven't heard anything on that, and we just are very concerned.
No, 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 it's not the roof, it's the windows, the windows, and it's very difficult.
Cause we don't take it kindly to having roofs leaking that we don't know about.
And you know what, Al, neither do I, so that's why I'm really getting involved in the middle school roof and how this will not happen again.
Sloped roof.
I'm learning about crickets, does the roof have crickets?
My, my granddaughter was in high school.
Only behind chimneys.
My granddaughter was in high school last year, and she had a, in the winter time, she had to bring a blanket to school with her to cover herself up. It was cold.
Right, we're really, again, as I said, we're not looking for the deluxe models of school. We understand that this is going to impact taxpayers. We understand this is gonna impact everyone in the town, but we need a safe place that kids can learn, that they're not cold, and it's a happy place. High school is the best years of your life in a lot of cases, so going to school in a blanket's not necessarily fun.
I don't think anybody will argue with you that the school needs addressing. You know, I mean, I, I went on a walk, how many years ago was that, Marcy? At least three or four? And it needed it then?
We will be fiscally responsible, we will make sure we take ownership for the project. We will share information with you. I know our communication committee is back up and running, and we agreed that if this project was pushed through and voted to and supported, we would continue that communication regularly. So it's, it's not something that the Board of Ed wants to do solo. It's something that we want to share information and get input on so that we're always on the same page.
What's your timeline in the best scenario you can envision?
Tonight if you wanna vote.
He's much bolder than I am.
It's a process with the State Department of Ed that we have to go through, and there's a whole set of guidelines on how you get the process going, and it doesn't happen overnight. It is, you know, it's.
But Council Miller.
So what's the best timeline you can think of?
From start to finish, for the entire process?
Till we know what, till we know what reimbursement is?
The reimbursement rate is 51%. We won't know the exact reimbursement rate until we can define all of the ineligible costs. My guess is it's about 46%, and that's being conservative.
And we'll know, and we'll know that about when?
Once we have the sketches and the design, we'll know what will be ineligible then. So that's when we'll be able to.
2020?
So three to four years by the time you.
Wait, from, from, till the end of it?
No, till, till we know what some of these figures are going to be.
Oh.
Or some of these options.
Well, once we get the ball rolling with the, the initial $25,000 investment, get that going, and then we set plans and then we go out, we have to get a secure architect, and then.
Six months, a year?
Put the process through probably six months.
Six months.
Your building will probably, you're gonna, you're gonna renovate around the kids, so you're gonna use your summer and your vacation points, but then work when the kids are in session. So you're, you're probably looking at 18 months, I'm guessing.
Okay.
And Councilman Miller, I will make sure I ask those questions. Once we get the $25,000 and start the facility study, I will ask questions right up on the front end so we can come back and let you know how long it will gonna, how each step will take and the length of time it will be, so that you're informed.
Well, you already have the $25,000, because that's in your capital, that was already allocated to you, so the $25,000 you have on that.
And we can move forward with that piece.
That, that, that money's there.
Okay, it doesn't need to go to a vote, we can start with that.
It's in your capital.
Okay.
It was voted on when we voted on your capital.
Okay.
So that gets you started.
It'll get us started, and then we'll come back to you once we get the results of that.
So I would just say that we need to, we need to have, you know, everybody involved in the design.
Absolutely.
So we all remember the, you know, the intermediate school, that, that left a bad taste in town, the way it was done. And somehow, like a lot of things we do on the council, it was like the 11th hour, 59th minute, and everybody in town, you know, we had to vote on it because we were gonna miss that year and, and, and. And it was the previous superintendent, so Scott, I'm not picking on Scott, so. You know, we can't do that. And then, and then I hear from Franny, you know, I should've had more input on this, that, or the other thing. So I wanna make sure that we go forward with this, that everybody's involved, from Fire to Public Works, to PD, to the Town Council.
Yep.
So that, you know, we just aired all out.
The one thing is that obviously with staying within the footprint of the building that we have, we're basically looking at, okay, for whatever cost we come up with that's agreed upon and voted through, it, it, it's gonna be efficient, it's gonna be aesthetically sound, it's gonna be obviously heat and, you know, cooling efficient. And so, you know, we're not knocking anything down, we're, we're improving the model we have and redesigning internal space for.
And I think that what we should do too is, we should, you know, look at the geothermal at the library and see if we wanted to do something like that at the high school. And I actually believe that there's more federal money, at least there is in the big fancy houses I build now, that money is back. So if there is federal money towards geothermal, we, you know, we might wanna look at it, because not as efficient with heating, but it works real well cooling. So, you know, I think we should look at all that stuff.
All right then, thank you, we'll get moving and come back to you with more information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a public hearing at 7:30, but we're going to start our WPCA Agenda. First item is correspondence or citizen statements related to the WPCA, the Water Pollution Control Authority. Seeing and hearing done, we'll move on to the next one, unfinished business. Nothing's listed. Item five is new business. Item A, we have to hold until after the public hearing, so we'll go to number B, the White Hollow Sewer Deferred Payment.
This item is on there. Basically, the sewer regulations allow for deferral of assessments if persons meet certain eligible guidelines in terms of finances. And to go back a little bit, there was about 20 properties that were, initially received sewer deferrals in the White Hollow area. Basically, it's a deferral, it's not a, any relief, they, in the end, when the property's sold, that money comes back. There's only one property remaining, that's included in the agenda packet. They're requesting referral for a dis, they have to do an annual request for a deferral. That's before you right now with a motion attached to it. And again, that's one out of about 20 properties that were initially in the White Hollow Sewer deferral package. Again, there is a suggestive motion.
Do I hear the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a sewer deferral payment for the following address, 47 Blue Trail Drive in North River.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Roll call.
Councilor, Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leo.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we cannot start our public hearing until 7:30, so we'll just. Oh, citizen statements and petitions for WPCA. Okay. All right, we'll start under the regular Town Council meeting, we'll start on reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
A no report.
Okay. Park and Recreation will be meeting tomorrow night in a special meeting, so there's the report. Police Commission.
Police Commission met on September 10th. One new vehicle was coming in, it may have come in already, and another one, the second one will be coming in within three weeks. There's going to be an official review by the Police Commission of the K-9 program. It seems to have kind of subsided for a while, and they're going to review that. I think they're gonna be talking to the town attorney. The Police Commission presented a retirement badge to Officer Michael Burke. It was very nice, his family was there, it was very pleasant. There was a big discussion about radio communication issues that involve both police and Fire. That appears to be a serious problem right now, and I think the two chiefs are gonna meet first and then probably the commissions. The Police Commission discussed the ATV issue, and I know that that's also on today's agenda, and I'm sure that our chief has more to say about that. The next meeting is on October 9th. It's a, it's a day later because of the holiday.
Thank you. Okay. It is now 7:30, so we can start our first public hearing. It is now seven thirty, so we can start our first public hearing. So then, there was a legal notice that was published. It was from the Office of the Tax Collector, Town of North Branford, legal notice, public hearing, sewer use charge. The North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority pursuant to section seven dash two five five of the Connecticut General Statutes will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty PM at the Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, nine oh nine Foxen Road, North Branford, for the purpose of establishing a proposed sewer user fee for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year. The proposed charge is four hundred and fifty dollars per unit and a copy of the proposed charges is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for inspection by the public. Dated in North Branford, Connecticut, this fourth day of September two thousand eighteen, Water Pollution Control Authority, Town of North Branford. So, public hearing is now open.
If I could just give a little information before opening it up to the public. The four hundred and fifty dollar per unit charge was based upon preliminary information that we had at the last meeting we presented to you. We told you we were waiting for some additional information from one of the other municipal costs. We received that cost, we plugged that into the sewer works operating fund budget. It didn't have a big change or affect in it. And just to back up, the current rate is four hundred and twenty-five dollars per unit. The program requested that you're looking at at the public hearing was four hundred and fifty dollars per unit. And that's based upon primarily what we end up with, pending unassigned fund balance, which is sort of our cushion if we have any problems, trying to make sure we have enough money if something catastrophic does happen or unanticipated costs are there. That really defines or sets what we have to use for the sewer user fee or what we want to end up with. Currently, it's proposed, the manager has proposed reducing that down to four hundred and thirty-five dollars per unit, which will be a ten dollar increase, about a two percent increase from the current rate. Overall cost basically went up from about one point five seven, one point five seven million annually to about one point six three million projected for two thousand eight, two thousand nine, which is about a three and a half percent increase. And that's primarily driven by our intermunicipal costs. We meter our flows, then we go to the three municipal receiving towns and we pay based upon their course of treatment. So in a nutshell, the proposed rate by the town manager currently is four hundred and thirty-five dollars per unit, which is a ten dollar increase per year, about a two percent increase over the current rate. Opened up to the public, but that's.
Okay. All right, thanks Kurt. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on, in the public hearing in regards to the sewer use fee in the budget? Hearing seen, no one. I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. And now we can go back to item five A, number one, under the water pollution control, adoption of the operating budget and user fee, and the motion's on page fourteen on our tablet.
And it really is, it's a fill in the blank. We left it blank if there's any discussion, anyone wanting to change one way or the other. Again, there is a recommendation of the town manager, four hundred and thirty-five dollars per unit. And again, what it comes down to is what we leave for a fund balance, trying to have a comfortable fund balance and trying not to have the swings up and down with uncertainties, trying to have a pretty much level consistent user fee as best we can. That's where we are.
Kurt, how many units are we talking about approximately?
Well, there's the equivalent of about twenty-eight hundred equivalent units. That includes commercial units as well and I've broken them down based upon flow. So I don't have the exact number, I don't remember that off the top of my head, but it's something lower in terms of the actual number of users because the commercial units are paying a much higher rate based upon their equivalent number of units.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion on this. Be resolved with the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority, acting in its capacity as the sewer authority for the Town of North Branford, hereby adopts the attached sewer budget and establishes a sewer fee of four hundred and thirty-five dollars per unit for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year. Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is adoption of the capital budget.
There's a suggestive motion and backup also included with that item. Basically, that's, we have some capital funds, we're beginning a balance of about a hundred and nine thousand dollars. This is just really, it's more of an accounting mechanism that we address any potential assessments or special connection fees coming in, which is really an unknown item. It's a budgetary thing. There's some transfers in and out of the sewer operating funds of about two hundred and forty-eight thousand. And this is really a carryover from the accounting procedure that we do for it. That money comes in and goes out, so it doesn't end up in the final balance. And then we allocate about fifteen thousand dollars in that fund for emergency capital expenditures, that's an unknown. There really isn't much movement in that fund, but it accounts for capital expenditures and potentially capital assessments or special connection fees. There's a motion to prove it as written.
There's a suggestive motion on page twenty-two of our tablet.
Be resolved with the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority, acting in its capacity as a sewer authority, the Town of North Branford hereby adopts the attached sewer capital budget for the two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Any discussion? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond? Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, so our next public hearing's at seven forty-five, so we will continue on with reports of committees, boards, and commissions, and we are on item D, Fire Commission.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report, I couldn't make the meeting.
Okay. Next one is Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee. There was no meeting. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met this evening at six PM. We have received all but one of our five-year plans. It was quite an interesting review of the plans. What we're going to do for the Town Council is put them together on a legal-sized spreadsheet. Anthony's going to help us with that. And then we're going to come back to the Town Council to review those plans, to look at. It kind of goes along with Al has always asked to have on the agenda, future planning initiative, it's kind of going to show you every department and what they feel their needs are for the next five years. I think you'll find it very interesting and I thank Anthony for his willingness to put it all together on a spreadsheet. We're going to meet again on October first at five PM, so we want to keep moving so you have it in your hands well before you have to start thinking about budget.
So a Monday night meeting? October first? Okay. Public Safety Communications Committee?
No, no meeting.
Planning and zoning?
So they had a meeting and the main topic of discussion was on the age-restricted housing down on Notch Hill Road. It's a public hearing, it's, they, you know, left it open, so it's coming up at their next meeting. And there's a lot of neighbors out interested with that.
Can I ask you a question? Is, there's a percent, oh, is there a percentage that doesn't have to be age-restricted? Is that, is that a state, is that a state or a town?
It's, that's one of the proposed changes, the tax amendment to, right now, we require a hundred percent of any development that's age-restricted to be fifty-five and over. But one of their proposed tax amendments is to have the split be eighty percent.
Oh, okay.
Fifty-five and over and then twenty percent be under fifty.
So that's a town thing, it's not the state or the?
What they're proposing is in compliance with the Federal Housing Act, which is a minimum of eighty percent. We're at a hundred percent, so we could drop it down.
Okay.
Thank you, Carrie.
East Shore District Health Department. I don't know if they had a meeting, but Sean's not here anyway, so. Okay. Town Managers Report.
Yes, item A is the review of the splash park concept. I've asked Lauren Monroe to come forward tonight just to give you a brief update that you may have, as council members, seen some public or comment or social media comment. And she wanted to, ahead of her commission meeting, brief the council on where they are at.
I just want to, there's been talk out there, it's been inter-type of times, it is on my agenda for the town recommission meeting tomorrow, the recommission meeting has not discussed it. We haven't even proposed it yet, we haven't developed anything. The voter asked me if we were interested in pursuing a project with them. I said yes. I'm very excited, the voter is really excited about this project, but there's been no discussion, no financials, no location, nothing. So I just want to let you know that we're not doing anything behind the scenes. They're coming to our recommission meeting tomorrow night to present it to the commission.
Okay. The review of primarily bonding and debt service.
Preliminary, I'm sorry, yep, typo, preliminary, this is just informational purposes only, like item A, in terms of talking about this discussion in the future about the police department renovation, I've asked the finance director to put together, and you should have in your folder both a three and a half percent bond issuance and a projected four percent bond issuance of six million dollars for, in terms of general fund bond indebtedness.
Where's that new high school falling in?
I think just helpful to raise the subject now and as the council obviously goes through with, at some point, talking about the police department, it might be helpful to have this information ahead of time to look at what the impact would be. And Counselor Miller had also further asked about the impact of mill rates as well, so Anthony can take us through.
What you have in front of you, the first page is the current year's budget, and you'll see the debt service, at the time we completed the budget was hair over four million dollars, four million seventy thousand. If you jump to the second page, the schedule prepared by IBIC, you see that left-hand block, the current year principal interest is actually down to three point ninety-two. You recall, we did a refinancing and that's some of the savings we achieved that fell into this current year's budget, that was after the budget was adopted. The middle column, middle three columns, take into account the six million dollars that he was asked to amortize over the twenty-year standard bond issuance and how it spells out on the end. And the final page, picture usually says a thousand words, and the red line there is our current debt service, and you'll see there's some significant declines, roughly twenty twenty-five is a pretty steep decline than twenty twenty-eight. And the green line is the impact of the six million dollar bond issuance earmarked primarily preliminarily for the police department. One of the discussions that we've been having and one of the goals we strive for in budgeting is to equalize things and to keep things flat. So, one of the discussions that was held at the future planning meeting was there are some significant items needed by many departments in this town that are big-ticket items, whether it's roofs, whether it's expensive pieces of apparatus and other large-scale items. So one of the thoughts is, okay, we're at a four million dollar debt service level now. If we don't enjoy those declines, but rather fund our debt service at a level of four million dollars, that surplus money that we won't be paying back debt service, we can use to fund new projects that need to be done, that we've kind of had our head buried in the sand for way too long. So, you know, last year in the budget, if you recall, we had, the goal was to put the value of one mil into the tax base. We came really close, about a hundred thousand dollars in the current year's budget. So figure mil is about one point two million dollars. If we can get that extra four hundred thousand dollars and get to a mindset of we're going to put one mil into our capital plan every year, whether it's half million dollars for roads that are deteriorating, two fifty, let's say, for the public works reserve and the fire reserve, whether it's the police department, Board of Education, there's all, there's a ton of capital needs that we just keep, we'll get to them someday. Well, someday the roof's going to fall down on us, we're, you know, we have issues. So, not only do we put the one point two million dollars into the budget every year from a capital perspective, if we maintain that four million dollars of debt service and don't enjoy these declines, that, you know, it's very tempting to do. If we save money on debt service, we can reduce the mill rate, but we're not addressing the projects that need to be addressed. So if we can live with the four million dollar debt service and keep that level, that'll allow us to satisfy some of our serious needs of our town, that we just keep prolonging and prolonging and prolonging. It's never going to go away, it's going to get worse, it costs us more money in the end. So, a couple of thoughts, again, the committee that Counselor Diamond is referred to earlier, preliminary stages, we have a laundry list of requests from the various departments. We're to compile that into a nice spreadsheet, give you an idea of what the dollars look like, and you're going to choke on it, it's huge. And because we've kind of, again, we've just prolonged things and we'll get to them. Well, every department is at the point where there's some serious needs. So, two things, again, I want to focus on, the value of one mil into the debt service into the budget, when we do the budget this year, we'll bake that money in and hopefully the council is on board with that. Again, it's only about the four hundred thousand dollar delta in the current year. And then if we can talk about bonding, because there are going to be some significant projects that fall outside of that million, two dollars, a hundred thousand dollars worth of funds across all the departments that are larger scale, that would be the time to pick those up. Counselor Rose asked me, you know, where would the high school fall in here? It's a good question. That would probably eat up the majority of those savings that you see. And you could issue bonds, you could issue notes for a couple of years and you could take advantage of that decline. That's going to happen in twenty twenty-five, we're already in twenty nineteen, by the time we issue a couple of years' worth of notes and bond it at the end. We could have the timing hit so that those first payments hit in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six year. So you won't see that big decline, but rather you'll see a level funding, which again is the goal of many, many budget strategies. So again, this is just your preliminary knowledge. The issue that Counselor Miller asked about with the impact of the, on the mill rate, you need to look at not only the six million dollar deal, but you need to look at the total. So again, looking at the schedule that Mark prepared, the second page, you know, in year, say, twenty nineteen, twenty, you're going from three point eight to four million, it's point three of a mil. So you're not talking a ton of money. Again, you look at, you can't look at just in a vacuum, the six million dollar deal, there's a decline on the left-hand side of the page, you see, on our existing debt structure is able to absorb a good amount of that police department or whatever that middle project ends up being, bond issue. So again, preliminary numbers, obviously nothing has gotten to the point of bond resolutions yet, which is the next step, that the bond council would have to draw up for us once the council decides on a particular project. This is just more of just some preliminary sketching out of where the debt service would fall. And again, to graphically show you the existing debt structure and the proposed debt structure, the declines that are baked in currently, and do we want to not opt to enjoy those declines, but rather level fund it to let us accomplish some of the tasks? to let us accomplish some of the tasks that we haven't done.
Before you sit down, go ahead.
So, just so I understand it, you were, you were suggesting possibly just carrying a four million dollar debt?
Correct.
And just paying interest on it, I'm assuming?
No, what I'm saying basically, if, if you, if you, if you can regiment yourself to the fact that you're going to pay four million dollars a year in debt service, right? And so we're going to bond so that it falls and, and we're going to keep that level debt service. So that from a, from a budgetary perspective, you know, four million dollars is your debt service. No change, no ups, no downs, it's as close to four million dollars even, as you can. So you time your projects, you, you kind of work things out so that it kind of stays plus or minus four million dollars. The way it is now, you're going to enjoy some pretty significant declines if you do nothing, right? You're going to see a big decline in, in twenty twenty-five, another big decline in twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So, do you opt for those big declines? Or do you say, no, we're going to live with the four million dollar debt service level, keep it level funded, and plan our projects accordingly so that we, we live at that four million dollar debt service, you know, for the foreseeable future? Again, the, the project that I was talking about, the school, obviously has a large impact. And just one comment to Council Miller, the reimbursement rate they tell you at day one is not the rate you get at the end. They always find ineligible costs.
You don't know till the end of the project.
Till the very end, till the audit is done, they nickel and dime the heck out of you, you never get what you're supposed to get. It's, it's, it's a racket. It will be that as it may.
Now, if, if we, let me, let me just ask this as a real hypothetical. If we, uh, go forward with a renovate as new-
Correct.
And consider the numbers that are being thrown about, you know, at this point, I don't, I don't see how we can sustain, uh, that debt with a four million dollar debt service.
If you ti- if, again, look at those two significant declines you had in there.
Look at before that, that's why I'm asking about the timelines.
You could sell notes, you can roll notes up, up to five years before you permanently bond them. So you, you incur some additional upfront interest costs, but you capitalize that cost into your, and your bonding at the end. So you could time it so that if that huge project hits, it hits in twenty-five, twenty-six. So you, you would maintain that level funding, you, you would time it so that it fill right into that gap.
They're not talking about six years down the road.
No, I'm saying we'll sell notes, we'll roll notes over.
Okay, now, we had a meeting two weeks ago, and we had a report from Moody's on our financial, uh, picture.
Correct.
And Moody's pointed out that, uh, a significant factor for downgrades is an increase in the debt burden. This is, and, and two weeks ago, people were, oh my God, you know, uh, our financial picture does not look healthy, and it's been threatened, of course, by, by issues with the state, and, you know, hooray, hooray, we've got a good, a good report, and walked out feeling wonderful.
Right.
And now we're talking about enormous amount of money.
I still feel wonderful. I still feel wonderful.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad, and I'm going to feel wonderful in two hours. But, you know.
I, I, I think you, you don't want to confuse the issues. The issue, the, the Moody's had a black eye on the town caused by the demise of the state.
E- even so, I'm not talking, I'm talking about Moody's pointed out that factors for downgrades-
Correct.
Which affects our ability to borrow and our rates, uh, that we can borrow, is, uh, a significant increase in debt burden, and that's exactly what we're talking about tonight. And they, they pointed out credit challenges, or, uh, I'm just reading their words.
Correct.
Slightly elevated debt burden relative to, uh, state and, uh, national medians. Even at that point, I mean, to what extent are we going to have a, an enormously elevated debt burden?
It's a valid point. I'm, I'm not saying I condone the project, I'm just saying that there, there's a way to make it, to massage it in there so that it doesn't really blow you out of the water.
Yeah, I, there's, there's lots of ways to massage, that's how people sell cars. You know, they figure out a different rate. But, we, I mean, we, we started off talking about the necessary help for a police department, and we were talking about a million and a million and a half dollars. And several months, uh, a couple of months ago, I complained that I felt we were being pushed and pushed towards this, uh, full, uh, new-
New building.
Uh, police department. Now we're being, uh, given today, oh, six million dollars, and here's how it's going to work. We didn't vote on this. This is, this is a ridiculous, uh, way of-
I was just, I asked to get numbers, I, I'm not condoning the project, I just asked to get numbers and-
Well, I'm, I'm saying by asking to get numbers, at this point, we're being, uh, pushed toward, uh, a project that I don't know, uh, that I'm willing to support, and I don't know if anyone else is either. I mean, there are a lot of issues on this, and, and again, we, we started off in agreement, talking about a million, million and a half dollars. And all of a sudden, it's snowballing down the road, and I, I think this is not the right thing to be doing. I think I'm, I'm feeling a little bit more frugal than, uh, my friend, Councilor Rose. I haven't talked yet. I, well, you know. I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for, uh-
Tom.
Tommy to finish.
Well, and my next, my next part of the question was, and you said that, you know, every year, um, budget a, a million and a half, or I think it was-
One point two, roughly.
One point two, sorry.
The value of one mil.
Right, so, so I, I would think that we'd want to see, if, to have a proposal like that, we need to see pros and cons either way. What, you know, if we're paying down the debt, what's the pro con? If we're not paying down the debt, what's the pro con?
Right.
It just seems like, uh, you know, it, it sounds good in, in one sense, in the other sense, it scares me with just carrying so much debt. To me, I mean, that, that-
Well, the, the one point two million dollars is non-debt.
No, 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 but I'm talking about-
The four million dollars, correct.
The four million.
Well, it, it-
We're going to bank, one, I'm sorry, we're going to bank one point two every year-
Correct.
Hopefully.
Correct.
And, and we're, but, but we're going to maintain a four million dollar debt.
Correct. Well, again, that's the threshold question, do you want to do a police station? Do you want to do a high school? Those are decisions you guys have to make. Did, I'm, I'm just talking about the numbers piece of it. The decision that you do the project-
I understand.
It is your guy's prerogative, whether you choose to do it or not. Um, the one point two million, just, just off the top of my head, if you don't do the one point two million dollars, you're going to bond things. Look at White Hollow Road and all, all the Birdland projects. If we had half a million dollars put aside for the roads, you do a systematic process, you have them all done. Fire trucks, public works trucks, they're all, they're all twenty-eight, thirty years old, they're all falling apart. So again, if you put two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars a year into the reserve, you buy a truck every, every three years, whatever the number is that, that Bramford thinks and Bill thinks are accurate. But again, if you don't do that, you find yourself having to bond, or you lease purchasing, or you get, you got to get a truck somewhere or another. So, you either be proactive, you put money aside, and you pay cash as you go kind of basis, and then the discipline to put one point two million dollars, I remember the value of one mil is aside every year, allows you to do that. So you're not falling apart, the roads are, are disgusting, and the trucks are falling apart.
Right, and, and that part I understand, but, but why do we want to carry the four million? That is, is really-
I'm, I'm just suggesting that if you, if you choose to buy into these other projects, there's a way to make it work. That's, I'm not saying to do the project, I'm just saying, if you choose to buy in, if you want to build a police station, if you want to build a high school, we can, we could make it work. That's my only point. I'm not saying to, I condone either, either or project, I'm just saying, from a numbers perspective, that's what I, I look at the numbers. The decision to do them obviously rests with you folks.
So on the, on the chart with the red line and the green line?
Yes.
What's the green line?
The green line is the existing debt with the six million dollar project of the police station. That's why it goes out further. The red line, our debt would all end in thirty, twenty thirty-two.
So when I look at these, the, the charts with all the numbers on it, so, so-
I think if you tried to swallow the whole hi- high school thing at one time, and, you know, I, I don't want to scare anyone in the town, but in seeing what Branford's paying, uh, down at Walsh Intermediate and what we've paid in the past, I think that, you know, you're going to be somewhere around, I'm going to say thirty million. So when I look at this chart, is it, so, we're paying, so we get, with, so this first thing here, we owe, we only are bonded twenty-seven million right now?
Our principal right now is twenty-seven.
Our principal's twenty-seven and a half million.
That's correct.
And that costs us four and a half million a year in interest.
No, no, that's over, that's over the lifespan of the debt service. So right now, we owe back twenty-seven million of principal, four and a half million of, of interest. We owe back thirty-two million dollars roughly, as of today.
So what does it cost, uh, what's it, where, where on this chart, what's it costing us to carry thirty million dollars? What's it costing us each year? Is that just the eight hundred and forty-seven thousand?
No, the, the column that says principal and interest, P and I?
Yep.
That's the, that's the debt service every year, so-
All right, so right now, we're, we're right around-
Eighteen, nineteen, it's three point nine eight two.
So there's your four million dollars-
Yes, sir.
In debt service.
Yes, sir.
Right.
So if you, if you live at that level-
All right, so if we, George, if we stay the same and we spend thirty million on a high school, we're going to be paying eight million dollars a year until this starts dropping.
Right, that's how you time it.
We're only gaining two million in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Correct.
Correct. You're correct.
So two million-
But I kind of agree with Anthony that we all know how projects go. So, if we did a high school, I can, I can agree that we would be into this drop before, before we were finished, and we're going to be bonding it.
Because again, I, I can, I can roll the notes over until it works out that we sell the actual bond.
But that only gains us two million.
Right.
So, you know, maybe we want to look at that high school as like, okay, we're going to spend fifteen million, you know, get windows, get heating and cooling, I mean, you know, that's all hypothetical.
Right, because four million right now a year is roughly twenty-seven million. So, you got to figure two is probably in the thirteen, fourteen billion dollars.
Weren't we, when I was, when I was always, you know, bugging you about our debt per capita and everything, weren't we close to six million at one point?
We were.
Yeah.
Well, we did the, we did the auger property, we did the libraries, we did the schools.
And I'm going to tell you, the town can't afford six million a year. The people in town can't afford six million a year in debt.
Right. We did have, we did have a blip there for a while, we did a lot of big projects.
Because that's when we had to start doing nothing else.
Right. Yeah, it was the auger property, the two libraries, the middle school, I mean, I don't know. Again, if you choose to do the projects, you got to pay the bill.
Right.
So if you don't choose to do the projects, obviously we can have to enjoy that.
Unfortunately, we're, you know, we're, we're, we've got to do something.
Correct.
I don't know what, George.
Something.
Something.
Yeah, not everything.
Okay, so since this was just preliminary anyway, just to give us, we're going to stop this discussion and go to our public hearing, um, which was scheduled for seven forty-five. So, the notice of the public hearing read, "The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven forty-five in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash two, which amends chapter forty of the code of the Town of North Branford Intiled Fire Department as summarized below. Fire marshal adds plan review fees and building plan review fees for building plan reviews and inspections done by the Office of the Fire Marshal. Public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the Office of the Town Clerk at Water Memorial Library, Edward Smith Library, and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this fourth day of September, two thousand eighteen, Lisa Valenti, MMC, North Branford Town Clerk. Publication date, September thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, in the sound."
Uh, two items that I referenced in my memo, that as I was finalizing this and hopefully putting it to bed, really need to be addressed and clarified in my mind, is which permits does this pertain to? Is it every building permit in the rest of our lives? Probably not accurate, if someone's putting a shed in their backyard, fire marshal doesn't get involved. Does the word "commercial" need to be added here? Is it a non-re, what's the proper wording? And I really don't feel comfortable, and I, shame on me for, it's been twelve years doing this darn thing, I should have had this done by now. Um, what the proper word is in there to clarify which permits this pertains to, that the fire marshal actually intervenes with. There's, there's got to be a proper wording in there, whether it's the word "commercial" or "non-residential", or some other word that says, this is the one that's going to be attacked with additional fee versus other ones. The second item is the proceeds. We talked about that's going to become general fund revenue, similar to what building permits are. Again, it's not spelled out in the document. So, uh, I'd, I'd like to either discuss maybe with Attorney Marino or, or David, bounce off some ideas as to proper wording in there, so that we know who this permit fee pertains to as far as building permits. It can't be every blanket building permit, because there are a lot of things that the fire marshal doesn't get involved with. It wouldn't be fair to those folks to tack on the additional fee. So I, I get, I don't know if the right word is "commercial" or "non-residential", or whatever the proper wording is, but I, I'd like to come back with that, if you want, if you can keep this open, this public hearing, Madam Vice Mayor, Deputy Mayor, sorry. Uh, and then the second one, we can, I can create some wording for you as well, as far as the, the general fund, uh, revenue, how it's going to be handled, you know, again, similar to the way the building permit revenue is. But I found, I just came across those, and I, I really think they should be clarified, because right now it's kind of vague. It doesn't specify what permits get this, right now it's every permit, and that's not really an accurate way to do it, I don't, I don't believe. And then, again, again, the wording, I'm not sure what the proper word is in there, as to what permits this pertains to. Um, I talked with a building official today quickly, he said the word "commercial". Um, I talked to Mr. Weiss, he said maybe the non-residential permits. So I'm not sure what the proper word is, I want, I'll talk it off to the town attorney's office, if I can get some guidance from them, and come back at the next meeting. I apologize for not having this ready, because again, it's been literally twelve years of my life trying to get this thing done, so I apologize for not having it done. Any other comments or questions, or want me to try to research or finalize, or? It's pretty straightforward, aside from that, I just, just want to try to get those things wrapped, those loose ends wrapped up.
And is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regards to this? The public hearing is open on this right now. Seeing no one, we're hearing no one. Um, based on the advice of the, um, Finance Director, um, we are just, we're going to keep this public hearing open to our next meeting, and wait for your comments to come back on that.
Thank you.
And for the clerk, it, the, that public hearing opened at eight oh five. So we will continue that, that public hearing. And, does anyone have any comments or questions for Anthony on that right now? No, okay. So we'll continue on with the, uh, regular town council meeting. We are on item nine, community events and presentations. Anything?
I have none.
Okay. Ten, citizens' statements and petitions and correspondence. There's a letter from the Agency on Aging.
Yeah, I wanted to put that in the packet, I think it's, uh, not often that we get recognized, but the, uh, Agency on Aging has recognized the town for its efforts, and the letter is included in your packet tonight. Uh, so I think, uh, kudos to the Department of Seniors and Services, they provide-
I wanted to go back to community events and presentations.
Sure.
Just for a second. So, this Saturday night, and I actually saw it on TV tonight, and I read about it in the paper in the summer, and I was really excited about it. Probably more excited than a lot of people, except for kids my age that grew up in town. Friday night, seven o'clock, at Branford, North Branford Football is playing Branford Football for the first time since pri- and I'm guessing at this, Ranny, you, you wouldn't know, you were a little kid. I'm going to say, it was before I got in high school, and it's a shame that we haven't played them, because it was such a rivalry when I was in junior high. And, 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 you know, elementary school, you know, half the town went to Branford, or half of Branford came here. It was a great game, and I don't know how or why we ended up with this game this, this, this season, but it's awesome, and I would tell everybody to go. So, seven o'clock at, uh, Branford's football field, Friday night.
Okay, resignation and appointments, there's none listed, but there's a notice in our packet at the table. There was a resignation that came in from Deborah Falvey from the library board. Um, there's no action required on our part. There's no action required on our part, but I just wanted to make note of that, which is effective immediately. Number twelve, unfinished business discussion in action, future budget planning initiative.
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay. The approval of the collective bargaining agreements will just get tabled until after we meet in executive session. So, we're on item C, review and discussion of ATV violations on town property.
So, I asked to have this put back on for tonight cause I wanted follow-up from the Police Department after our discussion two weeks ago because we have damage both to public and private properties. And I wanted to find out what, what's new.
Short answer is, we're working on it. So, we're looking at various options and researching CLIA certified policies for some of the requests that were made here last meeting. And we'll get back to it further, but that's where we stand right now.
Well, I, I do have to say, I thought about it a lot. And I wasn't happy with the way the discussions went two weeks ago because we're talking about the ATVs and it was introduced because of one particular farmer, is that right, Hal? Sustained significant damage. And the conversation took a turn and all of a sudden, we're talking about acquiring a twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment for this enforcement effort. Now, why we would want a side-by-side ATV for that purpose baffles me. We're not gonna chase, or are we prepared to chase ATVs that are zipping around? We talked about some other methodologies. One of the methodologies that we didn't talk about is like basic police work one-on-one. You assign someone to the areas when violations are occurring and give them equipment that you already own. Give them a pair of binoculars. The kids are, the people are people that some of us know and can identify. You don't have to chase them, but we can identify them and we can pursue it that way. I see the material in here on constructing a, and the need to construct an ordinance. And clearly, there's a need to do that. But I, you know, frankly, I was, I thought about it and I was just offended that we're gonna buy a twenty, we're proposing to buy a twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment to go after people on, on dirt bikes with a, not on a dirt bike. I mean, you're not chasing people on the street. I don't know what your chase policy is, but I know what the state's chase policy is.
I think I made that pretty clear last meeting on, you know, how we filed those guidelines, so.
You know, so.
I never proposed chasing anybody.
Yeah, well, what's the?
And I never said we didn't do old-school police work either.
Well, I didn't say you didn't. I'm saying that that's the stuff we should be, we should be talking about and we should, or we're not talking.
Should we be talking about in town council, every operational plan that we put together?
Well, maybe because it comes in as a, as a question in that, in that particular regard because I didn't hear what we're going to do. I heard what we're not going to do. And I'm, I'm really not wanting to think our hands are tied.
Okay.
You know, and I just wanted to get that off my, my chest.
So, George, I think that, you know, nobody said we were gonna buy one. And, you know, and I, I was a big part of this discussion. And he made it perfectly clear that on his watch, they weren't gonna chase anybody and nobody wanted him to chase anybody. But for years on the council, between, you know, it's been mentioned that a vehicle like that, you know, might be, might be usable, might have a, have a place in town and for all the different services. And if you remember, we charged, you know, Mr. Lovelace with talking to fire, talking to Public Works, researching what's out there and coming back with a plan with that. And, you know, so that's, that's where I thought we left off. And I think, you know, he said he's working on that. So, I, I don't think that, you know, we haven't heard yet from him whether he even wants an ATV.
I think I'm feeling rather frugal at this point.
I'm, I'm thinking you're, I'm thinking you're a conservative Republican over there. You better come sit over here.
I'm way, I, I am way down the scent, but.
So, anyway, I mean, I wanted to hear from him, you know, on this. So, I hope he still continues working on it when he can so that we can, you know, then, again, like buying a new high school, you know, then we decide whether we're doing that or not. After he tells us whether he wants one, how it's gonna be used, whether it's gonna be shared with other departments and all that. And I think that's where, that's where at least I left off.
That's where I thought.
In my mind, last, last time, so.
Yeah, I recall.
I'm sorry if you thought we were saying, "Go buy one", cause I wasn't there yet.
Yeah, I thought we were just bouncing ideas around, it's suggestions, and I think.
Cause it, cause it has been a real problem for years.
Yeah.
And, you know, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna be out there in the woods with a cruiser.
No, and, and again, as I, as I said at that time, that's why, you know, we moved into four-wheel-drive vehicles to have some greater flexibility. And, you know, this is, this is not the largest of towns with unknown perpetrators for some of these things. These are people who can be identified and an effort can be made to, to do that.
And I think when, when the, I, I know, I know that in talking to Vin Marino, you know, he did find, while we were talking, he found a state statute that allows towns to put an ordinance in that would give him some bite. I mean, basically, he was telling us he didn't have much bite right now.
And there were, and there were proposed a couple of model.
So, I think when, when, when Vin's back, then we hear from, we hear that too. And see just, you know, what, you know, what sort of an ordinance should we be putting in that gives these guys something to stand on when they can go out there?
And I'm interested in trying to move forward on it because this is real damage and real losses in current time. So, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item thirteen, new business discussion in action. A, approval of proposed ordinance, two thousand eighteen-two, chapter forty, Intiled Fire Department. That is going to have to just be continued due to our public hearing being still open. Item B, review and discussion of contract with H.D. Seeger regarding insurance services. I asked to have this put on. As you recall, H.D. Seeger was awarded the contract at twenty thousand dollars a year, I believe. And did it start in sixteen, seventeen? So, we are, are we in the third year now?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So, my concern is, is we're paying twenty thousand dollars a year, but now, and the bulk from what I read from what they do, the bulk of it is due to the medical insurance piece of the plan. But this town just, unions have moved all of their insurance over to the State Partnership Plan or Teamsters, and the Board of Ed is moving all of their insurance, medical insurance, over to the State Partnership Plan as of November first of this year also. So, what is there left? What would H.D. Seeger have to do? Because they're not gonna champion on our part or negotiate anything with Anthem cause no one's going to be with Anthem anymore on, for the health insurance. And we're with the State Partnership Plan. Their rates are all published on the website, on the state website. There's nothing to negotiate with them. So, that's why I asked to put it on the agenda to see once, if there was anything that we could do to negotiate their rate. And since we're in the third year, I guess it's the third year of the contract, but for twenty thousand dollars, they're not gonna have to do the work that they had to do in the past. So, that's why I asked to put it on the agenda. So, I, I, and I don't know the answer to that, if we can adjust that price, if we need to talk to them, or we just pay them twenty thousand dollars for this year.
No, I think we've raised the issue with him. The principal, Scott, has been out and traveling. So, when he, when he comes back to the office, it's a conversation. We'll maybe have him come in and, or talk with him about the third year and whether or not he can adjust that based on the, the bulk of the work being insurance that's already taken care of. We'll be happy to open up that dialogue and, and talk with him about that.
Okay. So, then, I would like to see this continued under unfinished business until we get an answer on that. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions, but that was my concern.
Well, I think too, we would want to, then moving forward, if we're in the last year of this, if, I, I know, cause, you know, in years past, they've said how, how they, you know, all the things that they did to help you guys here. So, I'm sure that there's gonna be insurance questions and insurance advice. So, I think that's the thing. We, we don't wanna be in, we don't wanna be at the, okay, we gotta sign up with somebody to do this. Again, we wanna know it ahead of time. So, I, I appreciate you putting this on now so that hopefully we can have a direction to go and, and maybe a different scope of services.
Right.
For the next contract.
Review and approval of pen, pension plans custody of assets.
This is a part of the transition from Morgan Stanley. Hooker and Holcomb's recommending we use Charles Schwab Bank as the custodian for the pension plan assets. This is a resolution that they had prepared in your packet for approval.
Do I hear a motion? It's on page fifty-eight.
Be it hereby resolved, the North Branford Town Council approves the attached resolution relating to appointing Charles Schwab Bank as the new custodian of the assets of the three defined benefit pension plans. Second.
The motion was made by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Discussion? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor, Agent.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor DeGrae?
Yes.
Counselor Zampa?
Yes.
Item D, recommendation for awarding the update on the plan of conservation development.
In your packet this evening is a memo that I wrote to my colleagues, which described the process that we went through. So, we issued a request for proposals for the update of the town's plan of conservation and development, which needs to be completed by this coming July. And we received three proposals. One was from Mylon and McBroom. One was from Fitzgerald and Halliday, and one was from Planometrics. We put together a subcommittee which consisted of myself, the Economic Development Coordinator, and two members of Planning and Zoning, and also Mayor Duty, to interview the consultants. Planometrics actually dropped out. They decided to withdraw their proposal prior to the interview. So, it was just Mylon and McBroom and Fitzgerald and Halliday. Based on the interviews, they both were extremely qualified, but it seemed like to the committee that Mylon and McBroom had more experience, both doing work in town. They recently completed the regional plan of conservation and development for a regional council of governments. We actually received a little bit more services for the cost that they were proposing, which is fifty thousand dollars, which was stated in the request for proposals as well. So, it's outlined in the memo that I provided, but that's a quick overview.
It's almost uncanny that three bids came in within a thousand or two thousand dollars of each other.
Well, because I think it was stated in the beginning that it was, it was a fifty thousand dollar budget item. So, it's amazing that they were all about fifty thousand dollars. And that was, I think, one of our concerns.
We talked about that right up front, but it's unusual to receive what really is just a terrific explanation of why it's recommended to not go with the low bidder. I, I recognize that we're not talking about a tremendous amount of money difference, but we have talked about respecting the bids and I think the explanation is detailed and very clear on why you're recommending to not go with the low bidder. And I commend you for it. It's a terrific job for that.
Thank you. There's a suggested motion on page sixteen.
I'm gonna move that the North Branford Town Council awards the update to the town plan of conservation and development to Mylon and McBroom for fifty thousand dollars.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Discussion?
Yeah, I've got to, so I'll apologize in advance, Carrie. So, I, I heard from some, from some people around town that were involved with the last one that was done and they thought they did it, that it was a really good job and that we didn't need much updating and we were all nuts to spend fifty thousand dollars. So, I went to Carrie with that. And she had some pretty good, pretty good rationale and reasoning that she explained to me. So, I would ask you to, to address my concerns and some of the other people's concerns just briefly here on, you know, like the feedback you got and, and all that from the bidder.
So, starting with the concern about why fifty thousand dollars was stated up front in the request for proposals. So, unlike a bid where, you know, we're looking for something that can be specked, like a sidewalk installation or a sign, this is a consultant who's going to be working with residents, with myself, with other boards and commissions throughout town. So, they could spend endless number of hours, depending on how much money they have, to complete the project. They could spend a hundred hours, they could spend fifty hours. And the, the end product, you know, could, could vary, or it could be very similar. But that's why we put in the fifty thousand dollars so that they knew upfront how much money they had to work with because we knew what was in our budget. The plan that we have, yes, it had been done, I believe, for forty-five thousand dollars, maybe ten years ago. And it's a good plan. I actually really like the action plan and the chart that's in the back of the plan. But that, in my opinion, needs to be upfront and that really needs to be the focus of the plan, which is where does the town, where do residents want the town to go in the next ten years? Our current plan focuses more on the history of the town, which isn't changing. That is what it is. So, that needs to be included, but that's more in the background. This plan going forward, which is where we need a consultant to come in, an outsider, who can help lead the discussion, not tell us what we want to see, but tell us kind of how to get there and how to summarize some of the visions and goals that residents may have. And one of the other conversations that we've had with the town planning subcommittee is combining the strategic plan with the plan of conservation and development. So, as was discussed, there's a lot of items that need to be purchased within X number of years, five, ten years. And that's a much more active document that's used on an annual basis. But that can be included and addressed in the plan of conservation and development by saying, okay, we need to purchase X, Y, and Z. How are we going to get there? Maybe through economic development, which can be addressed in the plan of conservation and development to say, we realize we need to spend all of this money. So, let's look at where we maybe wanna see more economic development. Maybe it's through rezoning, having more business areas, or allowing for denser development, denser housing units. So, there's a lot of different options. But the two plans as far as plan of conservation and development, or the larger vision that residents have, goes hand in hand and, I think, with the strategic plan, a lot of our expenses.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on that, or you're all good?
All good?
Okay. Roll call?
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yeah.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
Council Zampano?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, discussion regarding open space at 55 Tommy's Path.
So this is regarding, there's a three-lot subdivision that was created at 48 Tommy's Path this past spring. And in our subdivision regulations, it requires that the developer set aside 10% of the parcel as open space. So in this situation, that resulted in about less than half of an acre to be dedicated as open space. Up on Tommy's Path, there is a piece of land, well, let me back up, sorry. So the, the open space is less than half an acre. So the developer has the first option to offer it to the town. The town isn't interested in such a small piece of open space. We have enough land to have to manage. So then the next group that we go to is the land trust. They also weren't interested in such as, in such a small parcel. However, directly adjacent to this parcel is a piece of open space owned by the town currently. That's 3.7 acres. It's mainly wetlands, and it's not actively used, you know, by the town, and is, again, just another piece of open space that the town does have to manage. So the thinking is to ask the town council to possibly consider not only dedicating that piece of open space that was, that was created as a result of the three-lot subdivision to the land trust, but also giving the town-owned piece of open space to the land trust as well. Because the land trust isn't interested in the smaller piece. They are only interested if it's part of the larger parcel, which, again, they abut one another. So it works out well. The land trust has been growing, is becoming more active in their membership. And this could be an area where they have trails, and is something that they are interested in. And of course, the land would be open to the public if it went to the land trust.
Can I just add? So, well, Carrie brings it up, it's something that's common throughout town, and Fran, Carrie, myself, have talked about it. There's a lot of open space parcels when subdivision came through, they had to dedicate open space. Some went to the town, some went to the land trust. And, and there's a lot of them that went to the town that really should be the land trust. They're passive recreation, they can't develop there, there's wetlands. They're unusable other than just passive open space. The issue comes up, Fran, now, now I think it's a call, because there's a dead tree on that property, so he's involved in maintenance of it. Become a big headache for him and a lot of times take care of his properties. The thought is, parcels like one Carrie just described on Tommy's Path, and, and in the Doral Farms area, it's a bunch of the same type of thing. Some town, some are the land trust. The ideal thing would be to convey them to the land trust, so that Fran's not involved in maintenance of, of the properties. And, and there's no future use of the property, other than passive open space. So that's thought process. This is really the first one that's come up, that someone's really, if the council is favored of the concept, you'd have to get, have the town attorney, prepare it, be needed over to the land trust. But the concept, if everyone buys into the concept, we'd be proposing to come back to some of these other parcels to be considered for conveying to the land trust, where they're just really more of a headache than, for the worse part than anything else.
If they belong to the land trust, Kurt, and there's a problem on the properties, such as a fallen tree or whatever, what does the land trust do about it?
Call for any?
No, they, they will, they will call for help if they need it, but they've been taking care of a lot of them right now.
Oh, that's good.
They have, they have funding to do that?
I, I, I don't know.
They've been successful recently with obtaining grants, but I don't know if that's for actually addressing down trees. But they do have a great grant writer, so they could potentially access funds.
And if they can't, what, what, who maintains it?
It only becomes an issue if it falls on, you know, a funding property for the most part. But I mean, this is land that, like, in this particular instance, it's, you know, we never have a use for, it's a, we took it over on a, it was a foreclosure. It was a foreclosure, and there's no use for us to own it. It's a liability for us in general. It's mostly swamp. The land trust would, is where it should be.
Well, Fran, this helps you out. Makes, makes life easier, makes life easier for you.
Well, the land, well, the land trust wasn't active, but I mean, we had to take care of land trust stuff, because, you know, just forsaken the people that were living there, and, you know, we don't take care of it for them. And they, they, they are now back, and they're strong, and they got, you know, they got people that go out and work, work on the property.
And what are we, what are we gonna do with a small piece of?
Well, nothing. This is mostly wetlands, and it's, it's of no use to the town. So it's roughly, is the 3.7 including the 0.4 of open space?
No.
Or it was 3.7 plus the 0.4? So it's roughly four acres?
Correct. Right. Yes.
Carrie, is my recollection correct? Is there some alternative in the zoning regulations provide for a payment in lieu of the donation of 10% of the land area?
Yes.
And is that at the option of the developer or of the town?
The town.
And is there a reason why the town elected not to require the 10, the payment, and instead took this rather narrow strip of land?
Because it directly abuts the existing open space owned by the town. That's really the only reason. So this just added to the existing open space.
So I have to, I have to chime in here. That's not consistent with what, you know, anytime there was less than like five or seven acres, you always took, they always took the money. And 10 years ago, my mom had a piece up on Great Hill Road that her family owned for well over 200 years, and she had a three-lot subdivision. She didn't have an option to give a half acre of the land, which she didn't need, because the lots are, are big. She could've given land away. And instead, she had to pay, she has to pay, at the time the lots are sold, $6,000 a lot. So $18,000 on a, on a, on a lot. So on a, on the three-lot subdivision, and that was money in lieu of, you know, you're absolutely right, Joe. So, and I don't know how many other subdivisions were done that way, but that's inconsistent. It, you know, there should've been some discussion on that. I think it's wrong.
So I, I will say, you know, it's on a case-by-case basis. Since I've been here, there have been subdivisions where we've opted for the fee, or the Planning and Zoning Commission has requested the fee in lieu of open space, because it would've been an island of open space with no other land around it. In this situation...
So we decided to take this one to put next to a swamp?
No, well, it's existing open space. And it is wetlands based on the soils, but I don't think it's wet year-round.
I don't know. I'll shut up, but that's wrong.
Well, we've got it now. You're not gonna be able to go back to the developer and say, we changed our mind, give us whatever.
Well, how do we change it going forward?
It's P and C decision. It's not really our decision. We have to assume that they're an exercise in discretion, in the town's best interest.
If you'd like, I can get a lawyer and see what his thoughts were on it. Might help the town to come up with a, you know, a good legal opinion. Cost me less than $18,000.
So do we want to go forward and, and?
Well, at this point, we own it. I think we oughta turn it over to the land trust.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what we can do is, as Kurt said, there are other parcels that we might wanna take a look at, but we certainly prepare this one for the next meeting. And if the council wants to look at others to dispense with, we can, we can take a look and analysis of that.
Comprehensively, I hope. Piece-by-piece basis.
So everything, yeah, we'll take a look at everything in inventory that we have.
And you know, the other thing we should look at, since we're talking about this, and I've developed properties, you know, in several towns. And actually, in Guilford, and, you know, they, I had a piece there where we had to put the open space for the subdivision back to the subdivision, and they actually paid taxes on it. So that the people who bought the lots in that subdivision paid taxes on it, but it was still open space. It's deemed open space, and then you don't need a land trust to take care of it, you don't need the town to take care of it. And so maybe in our plan of development, we should look at something like that. You actually get a few tax dollars on this land, and it's open space for passive in, in the, you know, subdivision. You know, I mean, Franny lives by a five-acre piece that, you know, we gave to the town when we did that subdivision, and nobody uses it, you know? So it actually makes sense to give them back, you know, make these developer, put it in the deeds, that, you know, every house owns part of this piece here and has a tax bill on it. And like I said, it, it works in Guilford. So, and then that way, you're not stuck with these little pieces of land all over the place that the town owns. And actually, you get some revenue from them.
So are you bringing just?
We'll bring, we'll bring Tommy's, yeah.
55 Tommy's Path.
We'll bring Tommy's Path back.
And then develop a comprehensive list?
A list, right.
All right. F, review and approval of job description for part-time assistant town clerk.
Yeah, this hasn't been touched since '84, so I have the old or current description in your packet, along with revisions highlighted in yellow for the new job description, which requires the town council's approval, which we'll need before we go to advertisement.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the revised job description as attached for the part-time assistant town clerk.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Diamond.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
Council Zampano?
Item G, financial report.
Basically, it's only August, so the numbers really are inconsequential at this point. I'd look at the top line, the tax collections. Again, we're slightly ahead of, of the prior year, 52.9%, 52.6% last year. Overall, revenue appears to be down, but it was a big miscellaneous revenue last year. On the expense side of the house, again, a couple dollars ahead of last year, but again, the numbers are so early that it's pretty much insignificant at this point.
So insignificant is not even unremarkable?
I wouldn't even say remarkable, Joe. I wouldn't even say remarkable. Insignificant is more.
Okay. Item is appropriation transfers.
In your packet at your desk, you'll find the revised sheet. You'll see in that packet that today we received the bill from the town of Branford for our share of the probate cost, $5,800 roughly in change, and we had budgeted $5,000. So on that second page of the transfer, you'll see a starred item about halfway in the page, that's transferring $1,000 from social service other contractual to the probate or other contractual. The rest of the sheet is identical to what's in your earlier packet, just adding that new revision that it was a result of the bill we received today.
So the utility charge in the libraries, the 17,000, what was, I, I see the little explanation there. It says radiant heat panels were turned on. We don't normally turn on the radiant heat?
Uh, I don't have an answer for it, but I'll look for an answer. Do you have a question, Eagle?
Two buildings, uh, cooling systems that are, are shorter age for equipment. Down in that one, which is geothermal, which was mentioned, was pretty good. We had a cold winter, which ran longer. And back of each system, evidently, is electric radiant. That's what they put in. So the cost of these UIs from under the panels, it got an increase.
So normally, we don't have to have them on as much?
They're dependent on weather. Geothermal for heating is not as efficient. I have modern heating systems, which is gas and oil. And your supplement is electric, so.
Okay.
When you get a cold long winter, it was cold at points, you know? Your backup kicked in and just, where your electric panels are bigger, you're out.
So make a mental note of that when they're interviewing you for the school. You go with a gas backup. Nobody's done anything with electric since 1965.
Oh, my.
And it's, it's not your fault, but.
No, I know.
Nobody has done anything with electric heat since 1965. And only the town of North Branford would do something that stupid.
[laughing].
The gas, the gas mixture, the gas furnaces, the gas furnaces run at 95, 96% efficient.
And we just put in a new gas furnace at the high school, so.
It's absurd. You have to watch every freaking thing, or if something stupid gets done.
And I, I think a lot of times, this doesn't even come before the, things like that.
No, it doesn't.
Because it's the building committee that has control of them, so. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept? I resolve the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the town finance, the treasurer and finance director.
Second.
The motion's been made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Fawnin. Discussion. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
Council Zampano?
Yes.
The next item is tax refund.
It's just one, is that? That's unusual.
Unremarkable.
Well, they've not signed huge for it.
Move to approve.
Discussion. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
Council Zampano?
Yes.
Okay. Citizen statements and petition. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Some move.
Second. Include town attorney, town manager, and the finance director? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.